... is that it does allow for certain tax credits to come forward to assist in the project and that's, that was one of the very large undertakings that we have done to date. Additionally, we have done the interior cleanup and testing of the project. We have expended well in excess of $2 million of private capital at this point for the project. With regard to the timing of it, we have a spring of 2013 set for demolition and certain environmental remediation projects that have to go forward on this particular building. As council is aware, there is also the additional grant that you were kind enough to help with this and part of the match, and I know that you're always wondering where the matches are coming from, involves the private infusion of the same principals that are involved in this project and have been involved and they have staked millions of dollars of their own money to go forward with it. The first phase of it, which will be the demolition and the remediation, is also the subject of the single application for assistance while we're here this evening. That's approximately $550,000. I have copies of the application if council would need additional paperwork on it and appreciate Linda's help in actually putting it together. We supply the information but we understand that the city has been very progressive in getting this type of money. This money comes from the Mount Airy Casino. The communities that are adjacent to that, which include Lackawanna County, provide a vehicle where the funds can come into and they have been infused into Lackawanna County. I've been involved in some of the other projects throughout the county. This will allow Scranton to participate in that so that we can get the building up to obviously where we all want to see it restored to and in doing so that will add to the tax base. Presently, we have paid all our taxes and I know that that's always something when applicants come before the city but we are a large taxpayer and happy to do so. The next item deals with jobs. As part of this application and there is a breakdown of it, we're going to be creating when it's fully phased out. Remember, we have the art residency and different office space and retail that will ultimately encompass the entire project. When it's all built out, we'll have 469 jobs, which is a significant one base for the city. Quite a few of the persons will be residents or we would assume that and they will both work here and pay the appropriate taxes that are due on it. So it's really adding a very vibrant part to that particular community, especially the residential aspects of it as council is aware and has been very supportive and has undertaken that full revitalization of that area. You have the trail that is coming through there and that will be used by the art space residential side of the particular project. So that's where we're at with regard to the budgeting as well as the timing of the project of it and we all look forward to one, the jobs in the short term, not include it in the 400-plus jobs. All the construction jobs that will immediately be going forward with inside the building. Obviously, with the monies involved, the prevailing wages will be paid on this particular project and I think that, one, it restores a part of the community that is deserving of that and has been recognized on the national registry for that. If we have any additional questions, I can address parts of the application if that would be appropriate or whatever else council would like to hear about this evening.
Just to summarize, I think I hear you saying then, since last we all met with regard to this project, a few things have been accomplished, specifically placement of the building on the National Registry of Historic Places, interior cleanup and testing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there anything additional that we might have missed?
Our soft costs with regard to our studies that we have made with regard to the Delta Group, which has been putting together the various estimates for each one of the components, when you look at an application and you have ably put it together, we have also absorbed those particular costs. That would be part of the $2 million that we have infused to date into the project. So there's significant, I'm referring to them as soft costs, but they would be, you know, for the professional fees and items to, one, get to the position where we're at to actually make the application now for demolition to get workers in there, more boots on the ground and more people.
And Phase One begins, I believe you said, in the spring of 2013. What would be its ending date approximately?
One, the entire project will obviously take several years to go forward with. Once we go through with the demolition and we will hit the remediation, environmental remediation, we hope to get the art space, you know, as one of our first items in there and get the people up so we get that residential component to kick in. That takes, you know, time obviously as they move forward with the renovation. So I would imagine this project will take, I don't want to lock Jody in over a time period, but I would say it will take time and spread over several years to get that up, you know. This is 600,000 square feet so, and it's $50 million when it's all built out. That's why.
Please identify the partners that comprise Lace Building Affiliates, LP, and are they the same individuals who requested and received the RACP grant previously?
Yes, they are the same individuals. Mr. Cudaro is obviously one of the principals and I forget the other.
Claude Demos.
Claude Demos.
Claude Lamoz.
Lamoz is the other principal that is involved in the project. They're the two major principals and there hasn't been any change with regard to that.
And did you secure then the matching funds required by the previous grant?
What we have is part of the $2 million that I had referred to, which will be, and it's outlined in the application that we have, will be used as part of the matching grant. We're aware of it that this is reviewed by all the funding agencies and that with regard to our private funding, that unless we have all the dollars, and not only the dollars that are in there, but approved dollars, that the monies will not be released to Scranton Lace Associates. So we have, we have $2 million in actual capital put into it as well as there's millions of dollars in other equity contributions that they give you credit for so we will meet or exceed what they're looking for. And if you don't meet or exceed it, you don't get the money. So obviously, we would have tied up so far $2 million of our own.
So have you received that entire grant at this time?
Have we received it?
The entire RACP grant?
No, no, we haven't started the draw process on that yet.
Okay.
We have not.
And just one more question. We note the hopeful presence of art space as probably one of the first components to be accomplished of this project. I believe they may be a nonprofit. Will that affect the taxation of the property?
I don't do the work for art space so I don't want to speak to that particular issue, but I believe that there'd be a residential component so I don't know how that would play into it or not play into it. I don't imagine that in and of itself has significance, but there, you know, there could be other funding sources or something that they have or that comes out of the project in the future. So they haven't approached us with regard to that yet, so I just don't know the answer to that, but I don't know how, you know, somebody buying an apartment there would be unaffected by that.
And of course, the project itself though is going to encompass much more than that and the remainder of the project should be taxable, is that correct?
It will be, I didn't hear what you said, ma'am.
The remainder of the project then beyond the limitations, the possible limitations of art space would be taxable, is that correct?
The different projects, there are tax credits now with the registry, national registry, so we'd have to, we are looking for those. If there were other public sources or other ways of getting up to $50 million to get that one, that's a significant amount of money, obviously, we'd be at about $5 million and on our matches, we'd have $5 million in for the first 10. There may or may not be, we would have to come back here, you know, to look for any other additional tax credits or any, I'm not working on any, but that, I don't want to preclude that if that means, you know, getting future development or future jobs or whatever this council thinks is appropriate for that type of development. So have I seen that on large projects? The answer is yes. Do I know of any now? No, but that doesn't mean we wouldn't be pursuing that if that, if they were available, you know. And obviously, the spinoff of it for the city is you create direct jobs. If you're creating 469 direct jobs, I would imagine the spinoff of it is probably going to be something similar, at least 300 indirect jobs is what the most national studies have for a project this size and which would have these types of components. So all of that would be presumably taxable and that's adding to your base. If we hit those numbers and they're, you know, obviously aggressive numbers, that's a phenomenal project. I know you work on very progressive projects and to be applauded for that, but this would be one of the largest that you have, so there's always public and private investment of some sort.
Thank you. And Councilman Rogan, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, very briefly. Just like to thank everyone for coming in again. Does anyone that watches these meetings knows I have a reputation, I guess, for voting no quite a bit, but this is one project that I could firmly say I fully support, not only for the neighborhood in Lower Green Ridge that, you know, there's a beautiful empty building sitting right in the middle of it that we would love to see up with, you know, people living there and, you know, commerce and people paying taxes to the city and, you know, the hustle and bustle of, you know, the success the Connel Building had. We would love to see that in a neighborhood in Scranton. Currently, we've seen a lot of development in the downtown. This takes place in a neighborhood. I like that and I think a lot of other people in the, in the city also like it. Also, the mention of 469 jobs long-term is something we desperately need right now because everyone knows, and plus the construction jobs. We all know, we see in the paper, the unemployment rate in this region, around 10 percent, the true unemployment rate's probably 15. Same thing in the country and the middle class has been crippled. So getting people back working again is definitely an added bonus to restoring the building in the city, which is, again, something I fully support. I don't have many questions. We went through this before and answered everything I had. So I'm more than happy to support this project and hopefully, we'll see this one come full circle and be completed and also right up the road with the former high school, or junior high school project. So we'll see housing in that neighborhood again, which will be great. Just one question for Ms. Abley, separate from this project. Would you be able to provide us with the loan portfolios and where all the loans stand?
Yes, this week Attorney Mulligan and I met with our Director of Finance and Compliance Officer, so we've been working on it. Do you want to add?
Thank you, Mrs. Abley. Myself and Mrs. Abley as well as the accounting department have been looking at various strategies in order to look at some of the loans that are either performing well, underperforming, not performing at all, and actually, we're going to meet tomorrow morning again. So we should have some sort of update for you real shortly, I would think, within a week.
Great, I appreciate that and, you know, we've seen, like you said, some that were very successful, others that, you know, unfortunately have not been partly because of the economy and other outside forces, but, and I just want to mention again, this project that hopefully we'll be voting on next week, this isn't taxpayer money. This is money from the gaming with the casino revenues. So I just want to make that distinction as well for this vote, for the viewers. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Actually, I just wanted to correct one thing. I believe the legislation is a resolution and therefore it is in seventh order tonight.
Oh, I apologize. I thought we tabled it.
I don't believe so.
In that case, I will be voting yes tonight. Thank you.
And Councilman McGough, do you have any comments or motions?
Yes, please.
Or questions?
First, placement on the national registry places limitations on what can be demolished? Am I correct?
Yes.
Does that, does the placement on the national registry change anything from the original presentation that you made?
No, sir. We took that into consideration.
Thank you. Approximately, like what percent of the, I'll say building, you know, the buildings that are there will be retained?
There are 600,000 square feet currently and approximately 94,000 square feet come down, just to make way for walkways and entrances and parking areas and some other areas. And about 40,000 square feet of that are structurally not safe currently, so it kind of helps us out.
Thank you. Second, on the timeline, I know that the project schedule in here is for Phase One, I believe, and it says beginning in March 2013, completed in six months. Is there?
That's okay. That's specifically for the components related to this application, remediation and demolition.
Okay. I guess my question was going to be, is there, at this, at current time, is it the plan to complete Phase One and then continue to work or is it complete Phase One and wait for additional funding or, you know, whatever? I guess the fear is that in some projects we've seen that, that are done in phases, that a phase gets completed and then kind of comes to a standstill. And I don't think any of this, I guess we're all looking to, for you to say that, no, this will be a project that will continue to be completed.
We ultimately had to pick somewhat of an arbitrary line in the sand to pick Phase One versus Phase Two of where we start and where we finish, but it is our hopes that Phase One just continues and we continue as we continue to market the property from a leasing and from a rental standpoint, that the Phase One line continues across the building. We've got, you know, 500,000 square feet once the buildings are demolished to rehabilitate and to lease and to rent. So it is our hope that there is no lull in the action, that Phase One just continues throughout the project and that is our hope.
And there is sufficient funding to do that, to go beyond Phase One and into the subsequent phases?
Well, we've currently, we're currently stacking our funding for Phase One, which is, which is a $24 million project, plus or minus, and ultimately, as new projects come on, whether we're going to do residential or commercial depending on the need at that specific time, we'll continue to stack our funding as we go. So is it all in place? No, it is not. Phase One funding is what we're working on currently right now, but as I said, I do think it is just going to be a continual development project as we move across the site.
And the grant that you will, that you're applying for extremely competitive until?
That is our understanding, yes, sir.
That there's no guarantee that it will be received?
That is correct and one item of note for council is the total project is about $1,007,000 relevant to what we're doing at this phase. We're asking for $555,000, but the project remediation and demolition phase that we're talking about is $1,007,000, but the ask specifically is for 555,000.
Thank you. And the last thing, I'm going to sound like a Reagan Republican here. It hurts, believe me. One of the things that I think that is good about this project and Mr. Rogan said that the trickle-down idea that the money that will be spent on the project will not only benefit the project, but hopefully benefit the community and local workers and I believe you said it would be at prevailing wage. Did you in your presentation?
There are prevailing wage requirements specific to some of our funding sources, so yes, sir.
And there's an intent that it would be with local firms?
That is certainly our intent.
If possible.
That is certainly our intent.
And I think that's an important part of the project that, in that way, it can act as not only a stimulus to the community or the neighborhood in which the lace works is, you know, stands, but also to the greater Scranton community and I think that that would be greatly appreciated. And thank you and again, I'm, you know, very favorable towards this project and I hope to see it, you know, complete it as soon as possible. We do also.
And Councilman Loscom, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, just briefly. First, I would like to apologize for arriving a little bit late. I hope I didn't miss too much, but again, like my colleagues, I'd like to thank you for coming here and explaining the program, what the intent was and I only have 17 questions, so. That's what happens when you get down lower on the line and the questions are already asked, so you're spared from them, but I do echo my colleagues and I'm looking forward to this project and just keep us up to date. Thank you.
And Councilman Joyce, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I would just like to echo the comments of some of my colleagues. I thank you for coming in and explaining a little bit about the project and I appreciate that this is a $50 million investment in a local neighborhood that is in some need of serious repair. And one question I did have, out of the 469 jobs, do you have a breakdown of what types of jobs they will be?
Yes, we'll have approximately with the wellness component, 160, education, 103, food services, 48, the potential for the museum component, 17, office, 70, retail, 71.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was really the only remaining question I had in here, so I was just curious as to what types of jobs would be created and that's all.
Thank you.
Could you repeat once again the information that you just provided concerning the specifics of the types of jobs created?
What I can do is I actually have it typed out so I can leave it right for council, but I'll go back through it. For the wellness component, that would be 160 jobs at an average wage of $33,060. There's the educational component, that's 103 jobs at an average rate of $36,412. We have the food services, 48 jobs, that has an approximate value of $14,086. There's the education and museum with the potential of 17 jobs for $25,456. We have the 70 jobs for the office component and they would be paying on average $43,531. And we have a retail component, that would be 71 jobs of approximately $20,613.
Thank you very much. And City Council, thanks all of you for your participation this evening. The project is certainly ambitious and worthy and I believe it will significantly benefit not only Lower Green Ridge, but also the city of Scranton as a whole. We wish you great success and if there are no further comments, this public caucus is adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1511.56]
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for all those who died in the last week, particularly Evelyn Margaret Barrett, loving mother of my friends Barbara, Betsy, James, and John; grandmother of my former student Peter; great-grandmother and aunt; young Matthew Waldron Stahl; beloved son, brother, grandson, and great-grandson; all those who perished as a result of this week's devastating hurricane; and their dear families and friends who suffer their loss. Also, please keep the countless Americans who are suffering in the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy in your prayers.
Here. Here. Here.
Here. Dispense with the reading of the minutes, please.
Third order, 3A, tax assessors' reports, hearing dates held on October 3rd and 18th of 2012.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land evaluation received October 15th, 2012.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, minutes of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority's regular meeting held September 20th, 2012.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D, audit status from Robert Rossi and Company received October 26th, 2012.
Are there any comments?
Yes, this is something that I will address during motions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Received and filed. Do we have any clerk's notes this evening? Mrs. Craig?
No, Mrs. Evans.
Thank you. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
I have one. There will be an apple pie sale at the Elm Park United Methodist Church, which is located at the corner of Linden Street and Jefferson Avenue on November 17th. Nine-inch homemade pies will be sold. Orders are required in advance. Regular unbaked pies will be sold for $10 each. Unbaked pies with no sugar added, which will be made with Splenda, will be sold for $11 each. Regular baked pies will be $11 each, and baked pies with no sugar added, which will also be made with Splenda, will be sold for $12 each. To place an order for the pies, please call 342-8263. And the last day for orders will be November 13th. And that's all.
Thank you. The 2012 election is fast approaching. As you go to the polls this Tuesday, November 6th, remember that you do not need a photo ID to vote in this election. Please be sure to vote. The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network will hold its Cheers to Hope fundraiser this Sunday, November 4th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Radisson Lackawanna Station Hotel in Scranton. A suggested donation is $35. Live entertainment includes the Fab 3, the East Coast Trio, Asia Lena, and the Q Balls. 2012 honorees are Bill Shakowsky, Tammy Saunders, and former Mayor James Connors. Please support this worthy cause. The Fraternal Order of Eagles in Scranton will conduct its annual craft fair on Saturday, November 10th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Various crafts and holiday items will be available for purchase. All proceeds will fund a Christmas party for foster children in our community. For more information, please call the club at 961-5495. And that's it.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Ozzy Quinn.
Good evening.
Ozzy Quinn, Scranton Taxpayers. I got a call last week from a woman from South Abbotons who was formerly from South Scranton, who was really upset about the state of the city in regards to the debt and the way that the neighborhoods are being torn apart. And she asked me to refer back to a story that was written by Robert Swift. He's with the Harrisburg Bureau Chief for the Scranton Times on August 7, 2012. And Mr. Swift, I did email him, he emailed me back, and I, basically what the story is about is the fact is that Robert Freeman, he's a Democratic representative from Easton, and he was former chairman of the local government committee, and is a high-ranking Democrat. And he was trying to address the nonprofits in the state of Pennsylvania in regards to them from being, not all of them being tax-exempt, only a certain percentage of it. Now, he, he had went to committee, it was spoken about in the fall, and after the election, he's up for reelection if he's elected, I spoke to him today, his office, that he will reintroduce it. And basically, he says that he's convinced it would be a way of saving our municipalities slipping into Act 47 status, or currently in Act 47. We all know about community taxes and bond issues and raising taxes and whatnot, it's not going to able to erase this debt. It's like, it's a knee-jerk every time we have to pay something, and it's a tough thing to do. And I know that we're coming on board will be some new state legislators, and I think, Mrs. Evans, I think you already, not Mr. Blake or Senator Blake, I think Mr. Freeman is very much, very interested in the fact, and he wanted to distribute the wine and liquor sales to the cities who are distressed, okay? The taxes. However, DCED felt it would be better if they looked at a payroll tax or a tax on public utilities and place a local property law. But anyway, what I'm here for is the fact that there is a lot of interest going on across the state, as we all know. There's so many cities that are in distress. And I'm hoping that you will stay on top of this after the first of the year, and so, because there's, this money has to be paid back by the state. That, the award by the, to the firefighters' union, rightfully so, is one of the problems was caused by Pell, because they said the arbitrate, non-arbitrate, okay? So, and I can't see any other way of getting out of this here mess, the financial mess. If it was just a million or two, but we're really, really in debt, and our population and our unemployment and whatnot, it's going to be tough. So, I think we appreciate it, and anything the Taxpayers Association can do to meet with you and the group of representatives, we'd be glad to do that, to see if we can't move along, something to move Act 47 along, so there won't be just talk, we will be here again next year talking, and we won't be going anywhere, but we can really move it along next year. Hopefully, also, next year will be the last year of Mayor Doherty's term, and I'm sure that he will be putting together, again, Mr. Rogan, an OECD plan. And I think that actually, since he is a lame duck, I think the fact is that maybe you should look at this very carefully, and sit down with HUD, and then talk about that housing rehabilitation I was talking about. If you can try to arrange a meeting with HUD, and you'll see, it's not Ozzy Quinn that's saying this to you. HUD will probably repeat the same thing, but they will tell you that it's up to the mayor, and who, of the city, who is in charge of the CDBG program. So, I ask you to stay on top of those two issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. And I just, I remember last week you mentioned about having the mayor in Lynden come in. Those letters were sent out last week, the requests.
Doug Miller. Good evening, Council, Doug Miller, Scranton. Just like to begin, once again, the last few weeks I've been discussing Engine 7, and I stated that each week I was going to continue to inform the public on what's going on. Yet again, Engine 7 still closed, as we continue to jeopardize the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of West Side. And no action's been taken by our illustrious fire chief, Tom Davis. Moving on to a few other issues tonight, we were made aware today that we were given approval for additional unfunded debt borrowing, in the amount of 9.75 million, which will be paid back over 10 years through a tax increase. Certainly, funding that's necessary to get us through the remaining part of this year and moving forward. Secondly, we were also made aware that a hearing date has finally been set in regards to the commuter tax, and that is December 10th. It's a 1% commuter tax that's been proposed, and obviously, it's an integral part of the revised recovery plan, as we are relying on that much-needed revenue, 2.5 million next year, and I believe 4 million in 2014 and 2015. Certainly, it's necessary moving forward. Without it, you're looking at substantial tax increases in amounts that the taxpayers of this city simply can't take on right now. And as I've stated, week after week, those city residents who do oppose the commuter tax, in other words, are asking for an additional tax increase. And I certainly don't think that's something we want. We're asking for everyone to pay their fair share, and that's what this is all about, and nothing more. And I don't think it should be made a political issue of those outside of the city, who certainly through letters to the editor and other outlets have made a big issue out of it. And I certainly find this to be an issue that shouldn't be political. We're simply asking for the fair share. We've been talking about that. We discussed that tonight with the Scranton Lace Project. Obviously, there's questions on an alleged art studio, I believe, and there's questions as to whether or not that would be a nonprofit, and if they would be exempt. I think that's something we need to look at, because if that is the case, I certainly am opposed to that. When we're talking about paying our fair share, I don't think we should allow that to take place. Certainly, an investment that's being made in a neighborhood, I support, but at the same time, I don't feel we should be giving a free ride to a select few. What's good for one is good for all. You know, if we're going to build a bright future, as I've said, we need to be innovative, and we need to come up with the unique solutions to move us forward. They're not easy decisions. We need the revenue generators. And simply making editorials in the paper and the Scranton Times, drawing their political cartoons, and mocking the city government, isn't going to move us forward. They had many things to say recently with the recovery plan and the commuter tax in opposition, and I just feel that rather than being in opposition and making comments in the paper through their cartoons, instead of spending the last 10 years covering up the fiscal mismanagement of this administration, maybe they should have exposed it and came up with some ideas and solutions to help lead the city government forward. But they took the approach to cover it up, to protect the administration, and mislead the public on what's really going on in the city. On the agenda tonight, 7A, dealing with the legislation on the liquor license for the Big House Tobacco Outlet located at 200 Greenwood Street. It would be approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license currently owned by Little Nicky's Pasta House on Fallbrook Street in Carbondale. Obviously, there were some concerns about this. I'm having, myself having some of those concerns as to why the tobacco outlet would be requesting a restaurant liquor license. And I know we tabled this a few weeks to try to get a response to that, and I don't know at this point in time if we do. I see it's in seventh order, if we're aware as to why they'd be requesting a restaurant license.
I'm going to address that under motions, Mr. Miller.
Okay, thank you. I certainly, like I said, a little concerned by that, and certainly look forward to hearing your response later on. Finally, tonight, I was made aware of a rumor that was, that's been floating around town in regards to garbage collection in the city. And maybe somebody here tonight can maybe set the record straight, make it clear, and let us know if maybe it's just simply others misleading the public on what's going on. But I was told that the DPW will be no longer collecting garbage for nonprofits, Koz's, in particular churches throughout the city. And I just wanted to know if there's any truth to that rumor, and maybe we can send a letter to DPW and try to get a response to that. I was made aware of that today.
I've not heard anything.
Yeah. I said, it was news to me, I thought I'd bring it up tonight. Certainly, it was a little surprise, I've never heard of anything like that before, but maybe we can address that with Mr. Doherty and get a response. And with that said, with the election on Tuesday, I would just encourage everyone to exercise their right to vote, and that's all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our sign-in sheet for the evening, but I'm sure there are those in the audience who would like to address council.
This is Scranton Phil Scrantonians.
Good evening.
Since I have been up to Mount Airy and lost my share money, I'm very pissed here on this thing. I assume you all went down there and examined the project before you vote on it. You're not going to vote on something you didn't actually go down and see. I hope not, anyway. I hope you have more common sense than that. Just look at what happened up there, the 33 million we poured into that half a block of Lackawanna Avenue. When are you going to wake up? Go down, if it's a valuable project, and it looks like a good project, examine it. If somebody tells me I spent $2 million on that project, I want to see where that $2 million went into that project. We know they're going to tear some of it down. We know that. The question is, have they at least done something that exempt $2 million to be spent? I don't take any words on anybody. That's the first thing you should learn. Somebody comes up to you, you want to see the books. If it looks good on paper and you examine the project, then go hog on it. But for words, forget it. My mother once told me something. How do you tell a politician is lying? He opens his mouth. When somebody comes before you for a half a million dollars, what do you think they're going to tell you? This is a bad project? This is this, this is that? No, they're going to put, they're going to butter everything up. It's a shame. But where we are in Scranton, because people listen to words and not look at facts, and the facts are prudent. I like to see that project done. I worked in that lace, I worked on the elevators there. It's a nice building, I believe it was a building. And for, I never forgave them for tearing down the Holiday Inn annex that turned into nursing home. That was a well-constructed building, and we paid for it. We paid for the demolition of that building. I don't know if you ever got it back from the bank or not, but this is the things that go on in Scranton. We're great out there with our hearts, except for the poor peons that are suffering, people who can't pay their rent, people can't pay their eating bills. For every dollar that's spent, no matter where it comes from, you got to make sure it's spent 100% in the best way possible. To sit there and put rhetoric, forget it. I've been along a long time. Rhetoric don't mean nothing. Anybody can use words to say something. You gotta use your head. When you go out and pull that lever like you all said to vote, you got to vote with your head, not with your name or party. Unless you do that, we're going to sink into an abyss deeper than the one we're in. Now, I've been around here a long time. Like I said before, Scranton was a beautiful place. Your grandmother could live and be safe, your mother could be safe. It's no longer that. And who do we have to blame? Our elected officials. And who do you have to blame that put them elected officials in there? The voters. The voters in Scranton have not used their head for a long, long time. I don't know why. It's there in front of you. Even when you hit them with them high taxes, that's going to come. I don't know if they'll use their head there. But I'm sorry. I'm sorry that people don't spend more time finding out what's happening. I told you once before, I was always more afraid of Washington than I am of Moscow. Because they could, Washington can do more damage than you, than anywhere else. They can, look what they did to the garment industry. That was Washington who damaged us. When you go to the polls, you look and say, who voted for that free trade agreement? Who put all these women out of work? No. They got short memories. That's what's wrong, actually, with this city. We got too short of a memory. I wish we wake up one of these days and see the light. Probably not in my lifetime, but I hope in somebody's. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson.
Good evening.
President of Scranton. Okay, I'd like to compliment council on their revisions on that capital improvement list last week. I was glad to see that. We weren't going to tear down a million dollars' worth of facilities to spend all the more. And I was curious, many months ago, a few months ago, we had a man in here preaching bankruptcy, and his name was Mr. Lewis. And I was wondering if anybody knew whether he was actually connected with the university somehow, just for personal information. And maybe somebody could just close a website to me sometime. Now, on this nonprofit business, once again, I'd like to say how much township tax exemption is too much. I'm sure you've followed the paper, now we have a guy singer moving into our
They've got short memories. That's what's wrong, actually, with this city. We've got too short of a memory. I wish we wake up one of these days and see the light. Probably not in my lifetime, but I hope in somebody's. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson.
Good evening.
President of Scranton. Okay, I'd like to compliment counsel on their revisions on that capital improvement list last week. I was glad to see that. We weren't going to tear down a million dollars' worth of facilities to spend all the more. And I was curious, many months ago, a few months ago, we had a man in here preaching bankruptcy, and his name was Mr. Lewis. And I was wondering if anybody knew whether he was actually connected with the university somehow? Just for personal information. And maybe I, somebody could just close a website to me sometime. Now, on this nonprofit business, once again, I'd like to say how much township tax exemption is too much. I'm sure you've followed the paper. Now, we have a guy singer moving into our Mount Pleasant Industrial Park there, and they're not going to pay any taxes either. So, it's nothing you can do about it right now. But I really feel that, once again, we need to start zoning institutional areas and say that is it. And if somebody wants to come in from the state and compensate us for it, that's just great. But you can't go on the way it is, or we're going to wake up someday and find 45% or 50% tax exempt for the good of the whole region. And all we're going to get is funny caricatures in the newspaper and, you know, they might seem funny to some people, but if I was the subject of some, I'd be a little insulted. And you know who I'm talking about, right? Okay. And also, it's been pushed in the newspaper about many of our homes are $500 or less for city support tax. Well, I don't want my home compared to Clark Summit, and I don't want my home compared to Akuldasak in Moscow. I want my home compared to Oliphant, Dixon City, Carbondale, Old Forge, Music. Taylor has a landfill there and they negotiate. So, we can't hold that. We can't cite that as an example. But that's, the bottom line is how many tax exempts are too much? What percentage of tax exemptions are too much? And as far as tax increases, many times, and I don't mean to insult anybody that relies on social security or whatever, but two-thirds, this is a fact I learned in the last week, two-thirds of the people that lost their employment since 2008 have started back for 30% less. So, just imagine taking that kind of shot. Maybe you have a car loan, your boss walks out and tells you it's your last day. I worked in a plant like that. They walked out at 2:00 in the afternoon, and they said, that's it. So, so we went to the bar and drank our sorrows away. But it wasn't fun for quite a few years after that. You will know it was a crummy job to begin with. And on these fees, I also sat down there and got a brainstorm about nonprofits. Now, if our tax collections are supporting trash removal, then why is it that a nonprofit pays the same as everybody else that might be paying a considerable property tax? Some people do pay high taxes. I really wouldn't want the tax bill from Fronwood. That might exceed my mortgage and my taxes put together, really, if it's close to $5,000, $6,000 a year tax for a more fashionable section of Scranton. And I have a nice neighborhood. I don't get, have any problems with any of my neighbors. They, you know, if they don't like each other, they just leave each other alone. And if they're sociable, they're sociable. That's great. And Golden Parrot update, I'm going to make this fast. I might not be able to stay the whole night. I'm involved with elections and working with elections. But 4,500% profit in outsourcing dealt by formerly AC Dulcom Division. If, if they hadn't received the bailout money and stuck the, stuck the government with the pension benefits, they, they actually turned a 4,500% profit. And they held the government, they held the government hostage. So, you know what always seems to amaze me is how, for years, we fought communism and these so-called capitalist job creators just get along with communists just grand in red China. Bach, 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 have a good night. They got a super bach, bach.
Take care.
Good evening, counsel. Maurice Schumacher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Back to, back to my follow-ups. Mr. McGough, do you have the answers to my two questions on the rental registration?
I made the request. I'm waiting for a response.
I guess next, then, would be Mr. Rogan. Do you know what is going to be in, what kind of data is going to be specified in this loan report?
I asked for a summary of the loans. So, you know, through the conversations I've had, by summary, I'm, what I mean, and I think what counsel means, we all want to see it, is the status, are they up to date? Are they in default? If they are, by how much? For how long? Things of that nature.
Well, you know, I think there should be more. It was back in, now, we've been waiting for this data. I think I brought up the 408 Cedar Avenue on the 16th of August, and here we are on the 1st of November, and we still don't have the information on that. And then, now there's-
I did send you, did you receive my email today?
Yeah, thank you.
I did send a little bit of information on that.
Yeah, but it's-
Oh, I know there's much more.
Yes. It's deficient, and I think maybe you guys should get your head together before and make sure that the information that you'd like to see is actually included in the report you get next week, or hopefully get next week. Back in late June of '06, the Pizano Partnership, I assume they're brothers, Edmund and Chris, received a $250,000 zero interest 30-year commercial industrial loan. And driving by there, I noticed that most of the properties are for sale. And so, I'm wondering, since they are only six years into a 30-year loan, if those properties were collateral for the repayment of the loan. Now, I did notice that they're, they purchased another lot in addition to the ones that are for sale for $365,000, and the price they're asking now is $1,045,000. So, whether or not they're going to pay off that loan when they get the, when they sell the property, I, I would certainly like to know more about that one. And I think, I may come back, because I may have another one for you. And skip to, Mr. Joyce, did you, were you able to ascertain why the controller's report had, had $1.9 million more at the end, at the end of August than you said was collected through mid-September? I don't know.
I haven't. And I also put in a request to some of the other questions that you had regarding the parking tax receipts and the audit. And I will be speaking to Mr. McGowan tomorrow personally.
Okay.
So, I'm going to ask him personally for the answers to those questions. So, hopefully, I'll have answers by next week. And if I get them tomorrow, I will send you an email with the answers to your questions.
Okay. Oh, thank you. And did, do you know whether or not the provider of the loan for the unfunded debt or amalgamated requested and/or received access to the, to the 2011 audit before they proceeded to make loans to us or agree to make loans?
Well, there is no audit yet for 2011, so obviously, there's no way that they could have access to it.
Well, there is, I mean, I'm certain that it should be mostly completed. And are you going to read to us from 3D tonight and tell us what is still outstanding and when those are expected in?
Yes.
Good.
Mrs. Schumacher.
Uh-huh.
Although the audit has not been completed, I'm sure that amalgamated and Janie Montgomery Scott would have required financial statements of the city. And I believe that Rossi and Sons provided that to each before the agreements were made to enter into financial transactions with the city.
Okay, thank you. And maybe I would appreciate also, maybe if, Mrs. Evans, you could ask tonight for one of the staff members, I don't know if, whether you're aware, but the phone system in this building has been not functioning very well for three to four weeks. And I keep checking with IT, and, and they don't have an ECD for when the, the project will be completed. When you call the fourth floor, you don't get answers. And if you leave, if you get a, would you like to leave a message? I don't think they're getting the messages either, that it's really messed up up there. Because I've been trying to find out, for instance, I do have tomorrow off, and I would like to have come in to review that university plan that a solicitor you's talked about. But I can't get in touch with Don King because he works on the fourth floor. And I've also been trying to contact him on whether or not there is a, an institutional zone been established for the community medical col, or the Commonwealth Medical College. And as I say, it's just not possible to get through. And initially, when the phone system started acting up, they said they thought, you know, something was on order and it would be a lot faster. But with no, excuse me, no estimate, I would like, maybe if somebody who's actually in the building could get the answers to those two questions and the rest. Once again, I will save until next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Craig? Excuse me, Mrs. Evans, but those people are under the direction of the mayor, and whenever anyone was calling our office, we were directing people to the mayor. And I do know that their office is taking messages. What they do with them, I don't know. But I-
The mayor's office is taking the message.
Yes.
Okay, well, I did try calling the mayor's office today, too, and didn't get an answer. So, I mean, that was, I was going to try that and something else, but okay, I'll do it. Thank you.
That is an issue I was going to bring up, too, tonight, because, you know, I had spoken to a few of the inspectors who aren't receiving their messages. People are trying to call in, and it's the same problem. So, we're going to have to get this issue checked out somehow.
Is there even anybody?
Hi, Chris.
Chris.
Hey, Jack. What happened to sleeping down there? Took his gun down there. What happened to him, wonder? I don't know. I went, I went-
They were waiting for you, and you didn't show up. You slept in too late.
[laughing] What's up? Tomorrow's last week, we need to see it tomorrow. I want to, I want to, good luck tomorrow? No, Saturday. The plan said 2:00, but I wish, wish good luck and absolutely good luck Saturday. Wish good luck with her. Hope everyone, good luck. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Chris.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I think the mayor's office is directing calls back up because they have a problem with their server on their telephone. The first thing I want to say is, you know, I'm, I'm really disappointed that counsel is all on board for this project. I agree with a lot of what Andy said tonight, but, you know, the greatest thing that I think this counsel could do is go take a walk around North Scranton Junior High School and really take a look at the other three sides of that building. And all the money that's been dumped in there, waiting for one phase to go after another. You know, I went to, I went to school there as a child, and I, I think the greatest benefit we could give the city at this time with that building is probably to tear it down. Because it's been so neglected over so many years, and so many millions of dollars have been pumped into it, and everybody's waiting for one more dollar from the government in one form or another. You know, a council member said that they were glad that something good was going to happen for the neighborhood there. That development is going to be a neighborhood all in its own self. We don't even know, I mean, from what I listened to them say, I don't know, are their taxes abated for a certain period of time in that project?
No.
Okay, because when you asked that gentleman about taxes, he really didn't give a very good direct answer. He started talking about all the money they were going to spend.
At this time, there is no abatement for them. Their taxes are paid up to date. I think they were saying that the situation involving art space, for example, that has to be looked into. But again, you know, if they're, if they're living in apartments within that, you know, development, I, I can't see why they would be exempt as a nonprofit, their individuals living there.
All, what I've read in the newspaper, it says that certain aspects of that project are being, going to be, I guess, tax exempt. And I have a real problem with that. The other thing I have a problem with is when the gentleman spoke, he talked about phases. And we have phases going on at North Scranton. I mean, they're not even telling us if they're prepared to move on to phase two. I mean, he spoke a lot, but he didn't say much. And, you know, the troubling thing is that everybody seems to come to Scranton with their hand out. And when you look at the state of the city, really, we've pumped money into downtown for too many decades, and we haven't pumped any money into the neighborhoods. And this is just another, in my opinion, another one of these projects. Somebody came forward, saw a chance to make big, big money, have other people give them money for free, invest a little bit of their own. So, win-win. I mean, why don't we go to every house that's condemned in the city of Scranton, find out who the owner is? Let them put up $10,000, let the city put up 60 or 100, and let's redo every condemned home in the city and bring them all up to code. Because all we're really doing in this city is, we're allowing people to move into industrial or commercial property as apartments. But what we're really doing is, we're taking any demand for apartments out of the neighborhoods. I think that this, I think the council needs to go out in the neighborhoods and see how many apartments that we have actually that are vacant. And then, try to ask yourself one question. Why are we taking the heart of a downtown? Because that's the lifeblood of a city, is to do business. And when you don't do business in your downtown, I don't know what you're doing. When you turn your downtown into, into rental units, that's not a business center. That's a residential center. And when, if you go and you rezone the city from light industrial or whatever it is to residential dwellings, where are we going to, where are we going to ever create employment centers in the city? And are we going to shift all the zoning laws to, so that we can help every developer who comes here with his hand out? And then, what do we tell all the residents in this city? That, I think some people here spoke about them being very, very, I don't know, they're just, they have no jobs, no money, they're overtaxed. You know, the people in the Avingtons are meeting today to, to try to fight the commuter tax. I find that to be a wonderful thing. I think the one question we need to ask is why, for 30 years, there were no investigations into what was happening with the city's finances since the 1970s, if, and in fact, we were troubled all the way back then? And then, we get people that come here and we're just going to hand them money, and everybody on council's all for the project. But you know what I'd say? Go take a walk around North Scranton Junior High School. Because, you know, when that came through, everybody talked about how great it was going to be? It's not done yet. There's a couple new windows in the front of the building, but there's not any on any other side of the building. The inside, people broke in and stole all kinds of stained glass out of there. The building's been looted. And when you talk about the former Casey Hotel, my understanding, the reason they never redevelopment, never redeveloped it, wasn't because it was vacant for so long, it was because it was stripped. I mean, we've got to do things that are going to actually help the neighborhoods, and handing money away in this project, I think, is ludicrous.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who cares to address counsel?
5A motions.
Well, I just wanted, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make one clarification regarding Mr. Morgan's comments. The city is not providing grant money to Scranton Lace Affiliates or to the former North Scranton Junior High School or to any of the rental projects in the downtown, like the Connell Building and the Chamber of Commerce. These are all- Is there anyone else who cares to address council?
Five A motions.
Well, I just wanted, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make one clarification regarding Mr. Morgan's comments. The city is not providing grant money to Scranton Lace Affiliates or to the former North Scranton Junior High School or to any of the rental projects in the downtown like the Connell Building and the Chamber of Commerce. These are all Pennsylvania state grants, I believe through the Department of Community and Economic Development. So, the city itself, in terms of the city's tax dollars, they are not being expended toward any of these projects, nor have they been. Mrs. Craig?
Five A motions.
Councilman McGough, do you have any comments or motions tonight?
No, actually, I'll wait until the comment on the legislation. Thank you.
Councilman, Rogan, do you have comments or motions tonight?
Yes, thank you. A few items. The first one is, I'm very disappointed by the letter that we received from the county commissioners, addressed to Tax Collector Courtright. As Mrs. Evans mentioned, I believe it was a few months ago, the city and Tax Collector Courtright asked the county to agree with extending the discount period to pay real estate taxes by one month, from February 28th to March 28th. It's my understanding that when the county commissioners walloped the taxpayers of Lackawanna County, with I believe it was a near 30% tax increase-
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight percent tax increase, the city and the school district, everyone went along with extending the discount period to try to take some of the burden off of the taxpayers. As most of you know, I opposed most of the tax increases, but I do agree that extending the discount period was a way to at least soften the blow a little bit. And the letter, and I'll read it out, it says, "Dear Bill, the county understands and appreciates that a real estate tax increase can be a potential hardship for taxpayers. That being said, we do not feel that extending the first discount period from March, to March 28th, 2013 is affordable for the county at this time. While the county annually seeks a tax revenue anticipation note to provide funding until we begin receiving real estate tax receipts, extending the first discount period has the potential to create a problem with our cash flow. It is our hope the taxpayers are able to take advantage of the first discount period by its scheduled end date, February 28th, 2013." Not only do I disagree with county commissioners, and it wasn't, just for the record, it wasn't signed by the county commissioners, it was signed by the Director of Administrative Services, Chief Financial Officer for the county, but I would assume ultimately the decision would be made by our elected officials, not by somebody under them. When, again, as I said, when the, when the county was walloping everyone with the tax increase, the city helped out. And did it cost the city money? Yes, it did. But was it the right thing to do? Yes, it was. It was the right thing to do for the taxpayers. Now, when the shoe's on the other foot, and it's not even completely on the other foot because the county's continuing to raise the taxes again, they're not willing to help out the taxpayers in Scranton. I'm very frustrated, wasn't happy when I was, when I read this letter. I was hoping they would have extended the courtesy to the city, that the city extended to them. It's not the right thing to do. I hope that they will reconsider the decision. And I would urge the residents of Scranton to contact the county commissioners and ask them to reconsider extending the discount period. That would give taxpayers another month to get together the funds to pay these taxes. Now, for working people who have a mortgage, many times, it's included with your, it's usually included with your mortgage, so you're sending the same amount every month. That may go up a little bit. But this is mainly for senior citizens and those who are lucky enough to pay off their mortgage before becoming a senior citizen, which are very few these days, who have their home paid off. So, they don't have a mortgage payment every month where their taxes are. So, these residents that this would help are the people that have their home paid off and at the beginning of the year, they have to scrape together that money to pay their real estate taxes. And it's very difficult to do, especially with the price of home heating oil, the price of gasoline, the price of food. Everything has gone up. The economy is terrible. And giving a month's more time would have helped a lot of people. I hope the, as I said, I hope the county commissioners reconsider and I would urge everyone to, to contact them.
Mr. Rogan, if I might, I'm going to be contacting Mr. Courtright tomorrow about this issue. I'd like to know what his decision is on it and if indeed, it's essential to have the agreement of the county commissioners. I'm hoping that Mr. Courtright is going to be able to assist the city and provide that extension that council asked for.
And that's great. And, you know, judging by, I didn't see the first letter that went out, but judging by this one, it seems it was Mr. Courtright that sent the request in, on council's behalf and on, from his office, asking for the discount. Like I said, I hope there's something that could be done, but it's, it's very disappointing that the, the county commissioners won't go along.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Hopefully, hopefully, the public will ratchet up the pressure on the commissioners and, and help them out, because Scranton is by far the biggest municipality within Lackawanna County. Next, moving on, as we, I spoke about a little bit last week, when council approved the, the CDBG funding for the next year, we increased road paving in low to moderate income areas by over 100%. And I had a few people that contacted me, you know, just in passing when we run into people and through emails and said, "Oh, there's a lot of roads being paved in, in the community this year as well." And they said, "Oh, well, the mayor's," they said, "The mayor must be paving them because next year's an election year." And a few, it was two or three people that mentioned this to me and I said, I told all of them the same thing, and just so the public knows, this funding for the, the paving was not from the mayor, it was not from the city. It was the money that this council, five people on this council pushed for and reallocated for paving in low to moderate income areas. And it's frustrating, especially with, you know, in the media, a lot of times when things are going bad in the city, council gets all the blame, but the things that are going well, the mayor gets all the credit. So, when it comes to the, the allocations for the paving in the low to moderate income areas, the mayor had absolutely nothing to do with increasing those allocations. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think he may even vetoed two years ago our changes, which included increased funding for paving. And it was council that asked the Director of DPW to increase what they applied for, because if you only apply for 300,000, we can only give you 300,000. Now that they upped the application amount, we're able to give more. And I know all of us that, you know, every person that put suggestions and, it was everyone's priority, was to pave roads. The roads in this city are atrocious and we're, we're making progress slowly but surely on it. And there's much more work to be done. And I know as, as long as I have a say in things, I'm gonna keep fighting for that money to be used the right way, instead of squandered on projects that we don't really need. Next, I do have a question about items 5B, C, D, E, and F. And I guess I'll just bring this up now. It's my understanding in the past that these items were always passed after the budget. Is there a reason why this is being changed?
Yeah, and, and actually, I'll elaborate more during motions, but, and I, and I believe Mr. McGough brought this up a few weeks ago, that we want to have certain taxes on the agenda before the court date for the commuter tax, so we could show to the court and demonstrate to them that we are in fact, increasing other taxes, which is part of the justification for the commuter tax in itself.
Now, will these items be tabled before a vote on the, on the budget? Or will these be passed before the budget?
I believe these would be passed before the budget. They are all contained in the revised recovery plan. So, they were set back in August and what we're doing is precisely what Councilman Joyce said. We're passing them early in order to facilitate the city's position in court regarding the commuter tax. But in addition, we need everything in place so that at the beginning of 2013, the city is up and ready to go and return to financial sound footing.
Okay. And that's why I always thought that these were always file council number one, 2000, whatever that's-
Right. In the past, that's how it has been conducted.
Okay. And my only concern is that once these are passed, that part of the budget is set in stone. There's nothing that could be amended or changed in that part of the budget.
Well, there are still taxes though, that are not-
Yeah, I see the property tax, which is obviously one of the biggest generators of revenue to the city isn't included. But there wouldn't, but these ones, once they're passed, they will be set in stone and placed into the budget.
Yes.
Okay. And the final two items, and I know, Mrs. Evans, you said you were gonna address this, but the big house tobacco issue, did any, did anyone from them agree to come in front of council?
Yes. Actually, Mrs. Craig was in touch with the owner of the establishment. Unfortunately, he has been out of, out of the country. But he is very anxious to attend a public caucus and he has agreed to do so next Thursday, November 8th, at 6:00 with his attorney.
Okay.
And they are, they would be very pleased to respond to any of our questions.
Thank you. And finally, I just want to respond, and I know Mrs. Evans mentioned this as well regarding some of the things Mr. Morgan said. You know, I think we would love to be able to use gaming money to rehab homes in the city. I don't think there's any person up here that would vote against that, to be able to give matching grants to homeowners to rehab their homes. But that's not how the program is set up. These gaming funds are, as Mr. McGough said in Attorney Jones, they're highly competitive and they're used for large projects that create a good amount of jobs for the community. You know, it's half a million dollars is certainly a large sum of money, but of that money, none of it is taxpayer money. Unless, of course, like Mr. Spragley, you went to the casino and you did lose. But it, it's, and I don't wanna say it's, it's an optional tax. You don't have to go to a casino. So, it doesn't, not everybody's being forced to pay. It's, you know, I think they used to call them sin taxes, tax on cigarettes, alcohol, and tobacco. So, I do think it is a good project. I haven't been in the, in the building physically, but I did do a tour around the building. And I do think that it, if fully implemented, it will be a very nice project. And it's going to take time. As was mentioned, this, this building is huge. Just taking the time to walk around, it's, it's a city block. You know, it's not like rehabbing, you know, a home. It's, it's a multi-year project and Mr. Morgan also didn't seem happy about, you know, the phases, but that's how these big projects are done. You can't just take a city block and say, "Well, we're just gonna build a building and, and let people move in." There, there has to be a process. And I know many people may be frustrated with how slowly it goes, but especially when you're dealing with a building that I would say is probably 100 years old, there are a lot of elements that need to be removed from that building. Lead paint, possibly asbestos, things of that nature, that have to be removed to meet current safety standards. I'm sure that that takes up a lot of time and a lot of money. And I, I don't see, I understand some criticize that, "Well, you know, what if the project doesn't come to fruition?" It's in our best interest and more importantly, in the developer's best interest that it does. It's his money on the line. It's, it's not, it's not our money. You know, he wants to see, and, and all the partners, they wanna see it completed. And, and council does as well, for the, the fact that it'll help revitalize the neighborhood, it'll create jobs, restore a beautiful building in the city, and it'll get the city moving in the right direction. So, hopefully, everything will, will go smoothly with this project and hopefully, in a few years, some of us will be going down there and taking a tour of a newly renovated building. And as mentioned before, next Tuesday is Election Day. I hope everybody goes out and votes. As Mrs. Evans mentioned, you're not required to show your ID this November, but you will be asked to show your ID at the voting poll. Next May, for the municipal election, the voter ID law will become law and at that point, everyone will be required to show photo ID at the polls. So, I hope to see everyone out on Election Day. And that is all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Lascom, do you have comments or motions?
Yes, just a couple of things, quickly. In regards to the phone system, I don't know if we completed it, but I'd like to make a request that we send a letter to the proper authority to get this system corrected, because I did have a few questions today myself. Just to touch on, on the lace works and, and the goodwill building, not to belabor the point, but like Mr. Rogan said, and I believe all of us here, it's in everybody's best interest for these projects and for the neighborhoods. The money is not coming from the city itself, but we have to stay on top of them to make sure these projects come to fruition and are complete. I know that the goodwill project has languished for a long time, but I've seen a lot of activity recently and I think the final piece of the puzzle, if it was in our mail last week, was something from the planning commission had to be approved before they could go ahead with it. So, I think we'll see some action on that very shortly. And as far as looking at the development, looking at the plans, last time they were here, they gave us a significant amount of information. They provided us with the layouts of what they planned on doing with the building at that time, what they, you know, the whole scheme of things and how the phases were going. This is just another piece of the puzzle tonight. But we're all, and I know I've gone, gone by there, I think Mr. Rogan has, we're all gonna do our due diligence and, and keep up with these projects to see them going, because, you know, things like this in the neighborhoods, I believe, are, are great. And they, you know, they're an offshoot to, to further development in those areas. And it's something we need, especially during these economic times. And I think, if my memory serves me correct, I thought Mr. Morgan said that was in favor of that project last time and he said it was, it would provide an economic engine for that area. I thought that was his opinion previously on the lace works project, but I may be mistaken. And lastly, I just want to say, we're very fortunate, this area dodged a bullet with Hurricane Sandy. I know, I mean, I'm not saying we're free of any problems or, or damage, but it was far less severe than was anticipated. And let's pray to God for all those areas around us that were, were devastated and for the fatalities. But I do want to commend all our city services for being prepared and, and going that extra step to do what they could do, from our clerical workers in City Hall, who fielded many phone calls and, and answered a lot of questions. To our public works employees, who had to deal with downed trees and, and leaves blocking sewers and stuff like that. To our police and firefighters, who were handling the same situations, the police officers, numerous burglar alarms, tree down calls, barricades, firefighters with, with power lines down, tree fires, trees down. Fortunately, there wasn't a lot of flooding, but I do believe that, that the departments were prepared. I had a long conversation with Fire Chief Davis on Monday to inquire, to make sure that, that the fire department was prepared in the event of the impending problems they were anticipating with, with the hurricane. And during our discussions, we, we discussed the manning and opening stations and, and stuff like that. And my good friend Chrissy here mentioned Engine 7 and Engine 9 being closed yet. And that was one of my questions. After I had brought out the problems two weeks ago and Channel 28 went and, and did an actual videotaping of Engine 7 and Engine 9, the city has, has done some repairs to the buildings at this point, and they've also had professional cleaners go into Engine 7 and Engine 9. Now, I haven't seen the final result at this point, but I was assured by the chief that that was done. However, they're awaiting, the reason they didn't open the stations at this point is they're waiting for an air quality test for both buildings. So, I'm not sure what the holdup is on that. I hope that wasn't a reason why we couldn't open the stations for the hurricane. You know, I mean, if, if, if there was, if we had the report and they're sitting on it, I, I'm gonna be checking tomorrow to just see what the status on those buildings are. But I know that when I spoke to the chief, he was waiting for the air quality reports before he let anybody go back in. And, and on top of all the, the stuff here, I would like to commend our police department too for that, for the arrests they made in that, the break-in where they took advantage of the hurricane up at Staples and Best Buy, I believe it is. But just want to thank all our city employees for doing a good job in our time of need and fortunately- and fortunately, we dodged a bullet. And I think that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Joyce?
Before I begin speaking about agenda items tonight, I would just like to send a special thank you to all of the city workers for their efforts during Hurricane, or Superstorm Sandy, call it what you will. I believe that a special thanks is warranted for the city DPW workers who continue to collect refuse during such a furious storm and executed their other daily duties throughout the city with trees being down. Special thanks is also warranted to the city fire and police departments for protecting our city and keeping our city safe throughout the storm. Also, a special thank you is warranted to all management and clerical employees who conduct, who continued to work through, through the storm and perform their daily duties to serve the residents of Scranton. For this, I would just like to say thank you. Secondly, tonight, on tonight's agenda, there are a number of taxes and fees. The legislation for these taxes and fees, which was sent down by the administration, represent agenda items 5B through 5F. The legislation for the taxes and fees that was sent down by the administration was sent down earlier than in previous years. Generally, legislation for all taxes and fees are sent down by the administration in January of the, of the year for which they're being levied. However, this year, they are being sent down by the administration early so the city could prove to the courts that the city is in fact raising other taxes with the hope of obtaining a commuter tax. To provide a brief explanation, in order to obtain a commuter tax, one of the requirements under the Seraphini bill is that the city must demonstrate that it is raising other taxes before a commuter tax can be granted by the courts. To remind, the commuter tax is projected by the Pennsylvania Economy League, PEL, to generate $2.5 million in revenue for Scranton in 2013. The first piece of legislation sent down by the administration is for the real estate transfer tax, which is item 5B. And this piece of legislation is the intent for the city to raise the real estate transfer tax from 2.8% to 2.9% for the calendar year of 2013. The increase in the real estate transfer tax is a part of the revised recovery plan that was drafted by the administration and City Council. The increase of this tax is projected to generate an additional $185,000 in revenue for the city on an annual basis, starting in 2013 if passed, and $555,000 in revenue for the city over the course of the three-year recovery plan. The second piece of legislate, legislation sent down by the administration is for the mercantile tax, which is item 5C. The intent of this legislation is to raise the mercantile tax to 1 mil for calendar year 2013 from its previous rate of .875 mils in 2012. This is the same rate that the mercantile tax was in 2010. The combination of the increase in the business privilege and mercantile taxes is projected to generate $500,000 in additional revenue for the city in 2013, and a total of $1.5 million over the course of the three-year recovery plan. The third piece of legislation sent down by the administration is for the business privilege tax, which is item 5D. In this piece of legislation, the intent is for the city to raise the business privilege tax to 1 mil for the calendar year of 2013 from its previous rate of .875 mils in 2012. This is the same rate that the business privilege tax was in 2010, and as I just stated, the combination of the increase in the BP tax and the mercantile tax is projected to generate $500,000 in additional revenue for the city in 2013, and a grand total of $1.5 million over the course of the three-year recovery plan. The fourth piece of legislation sent down by the administration was for the waste disposal fee, commonly referred to as the garbage fee. The garbage fee in the legislation that was sent down by the administration was set at $178 for the calendar year of 2013. Originally, in the recovery plan that was sent down by the administration back in May, the administration intended to raise the garbage fee to $189 in 2013, and $200 in 2014. This would have constituted increases of 6.2% and 5.8%, which compounded, would have led to an overall garbage fee increase of 12.4%. In the drafting of the joint recovery plan, Councilwoman Evans and I fought hardly against this increase, and the end result in the joint recovery plan was that it was decided not to raise the garbage fee on city residents. The fifth piece of legislation sent down by the administration was for the local services tax, commonly referred to as the LST. This tax was formerly named the Emergency and Municipal Services Tax. To inform, this is the $52 per year tax that is deducted from one's paycheck, usually in $2 per week increments. There will be no increases in the LST as they are prohibited by law. And lastly, tonight, as one mayor may not know, the city of Scranton does not have a completed audit for the year of 2011, as other matters have taken priority overturning information to Rossi and Rossi, our independent auditor, by the Business Administrator's Office throughout the year. We have received an update from Rossi and Rossi regarding the audit. According to Rossi and Rossi in their January 26 letter, they had stated that in order to issue audited financial statements by May 31 of this year, the outline of the 2011 audit timetable must have been adhered to. Because Rossi and Rossi has not received the information on a timely basis, the completion of the audited financial statements has been delayed. As of October 24, the actuarial calculations on the Gatsby 45 post-employment benefits had not been provided, which was holding up the audit. In addition, the special cities fund demolition memo was still open. Rossi and Rossi had the understanding that this information was to be completed by the end of October. After this information is received by Rossi and Rossi, an audit testing is completed, Rossi and Rossi will present a draft of the full financial statements for the city to review and complete the management discussion and analysis section of the audit report. Mrs. Craig, given the following information, please contact Mr. McGowan and inquire whether information that was scheduled to be submitted by Rossi and Rossi at the end of October was actually submitted to them. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. I too wish to begin by acknowledging the Scranton Departments of Police, Fire, and Public Works, as well as all emergency medical and management personnel who worked tirelessly throughout the days before, during, and after Hurricane Sandy to serve and protect the good people of Scranton. It is during such devastating and challenging times that the purpose of government is best exercised and appreciated. Without the men and women of the Police, Fire, and DPW Departments, citizens could face emergencies alone and unprotected. These, among others, are the services city government provides and that you have come to expect. Please join me in thanking the hardworking men and women of our community for a job well On tonight's agenda, in addition to several pieces of legislation which set many of the 2013 tax rates, is legislation submitted to City Council by the city's legal department to prohibit truck traffic with certain exemptions off Lake Scranton Road from Route 307 northeasterly to Elmhurst Boulevard, directing postage of signage and prescribing penalties for violations. This legislation was drafted and appears before Scranton City Council in order to respond to the demonstrated concerns of homeowners in the aforementioned area related to increased truck traffic which damages roads and negatively impacts the safety and quality of life of residents. Because homeowners have been so patient as they awaited relief from city government, I ask that council would suspend its rules next week to place the legislation into a final reading for adoption and immediate enforcement purposes. In addition, City Council continues to work with the administration to amend the rental registration program as soon as possible to provide a partial credit in 2013 for owners of rental properties who recently and voluntarily paid 2012 fees in full without having been billed. Also, the city solicitor is in the process of drafting amusement tax legislation in conjunction with the Pennsylvania Economy League and council solicitor. This legislation will be introduced on council's agenda in the near future. At the same time, council continues its review of the city's noise ordinance to prohibit boom cars from disturbing the quality of life of city residents. Next, I was informed that the Burkheimer office in the Steamtown Mall has been closed all week. A note on the office door indicates that they are closed due to Hurricane Sandy. Also, the Burkheimer website is down. These circumstances may create a potential problem since October 31st was the deadline for payment of third quarter earned income taxes. Mrs. Craig, please contact Ryan McGowan in the morning and follow up with memos to the mayor and him. City Council urges Burkheimer to inform taxpayers of their third quarter status and how to proceed with payments as soon as possible. The city of Scranton can ill afford to fall behind in EIT revenues at this time, and taxpayers should not be penalized for circumstances which are beyond their control. Finally, City Clerk Mrs. Craig was in contact with the owner of Big House Tobacco Outlet following last week's council meeting. Because he is currently out of town, Mr. Fadden was unable to attend a public caucus this evening. However, he indicated that he and Attorney O'Brien, his counsel, are very anxious to attend a caucus on Thursday, November 8th, at 6:00 PM. Therefore, council will consider tabling this legislation during tonight's meeting until such time as questions and concerns will be addressed publicly. And that's it.
Mrs. Evans, you brought up the rental registration. The speaker last week brought up the concern with the phrasing in the safety inspection where it said "but not limited to." I received a couple of phone calls also concerned with that. I'd just like to say that I did not perceive the negative aspects of that when it was included. I will speak with Attorney Kelly and see what we can do to revise that, because looking at it now, it, it, it does have the potential for harm that was obviously unintended by us, but we will look into it.
And then hopefully, we can amend.
Yes.
Everything in one.
Right, amend it for 2013.
Yes, thank you.
5B, amending file of the council number 6, 1976, entitled "An Ordinance as Amended: Imposing a Tax for General Revenue Purposes on the Transfer of Real Property Situate Within the City of Scranton, Prescribing and Regulating the Method of Evidencing the Payment of Such Tax, Conferring Powers and Imposing Duties Upon Certain Persons and Providing Penalties by Imposing the Rate of the Realty Transfer Tax at 2.9% for Calendar Year 2013."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I understand the reasoning why the administration and many of council want to have this up front of the courts for the commuter tax legislation, but just by looking at the dates, if the mayor presents the budget on November 15th, which is required, and the first reading of the budget was on the 22nd, and then the second was on the 29th, that would be the first week of December, the budget would be complete. Now, I know these were contained in the recovery plan, but any alterations that wanted to be made, we wouldn't be able to, with the exception of, I believe it's 5F, which, as Mr. Joyce said, by law cannot be changed. I will be opposing these only for the fact that it sets in stone a portion of the budget before the budgetary process even plays out. So for that reason, I would be voting no on 5B, C, D, and E. And again, as Mr. Joyce mentioned, if 5F cannot be changed by law, then it could be approved for 10 years if we wanted to. So 5F, I will vote yes.
And just to reiterate, all of these taxes were included in the revised recovery plan, and the budget for 2013 is largely being built upon that recovery plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
5C, amending file of council number 7, 1976, entitled "An Ordinance as Amended: Imposing a Mercantile License Tax of Two Milks for the Year 1976 and Annually Thereafter upon Persons Engaging in Certain Occupations and Businesses Therein, Providing for Its Levy and Collection and for the Issuance of Mercantile Licenses, Conferring and Imposing Powers and Duties Upon the Tax Collector of the City of Scranton, and imposing penalties by imposing the Mercantile License Tax at 1 mil for Calendar Year 2013."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
5D, amending file of council number 8, 1976, entitled "An Ordinance as Amended: Providing for the General Revenue by Imposing a Tax at the Rate of Two Milks upon the Privilege of Operating or Conducting Business in the City of Scranton as Measured by the Gross Receipts Therefrom, Requiring Registration and Payment of the Tax as Conditioned to the Conducting of Such Business, Providing for the Levy and Collection of Such Tax, Prescribing Such Requirements for Returns and Records, Conferring Powers and Duties Upon the Tax Collector, and imposing penalties by imposing the Business Privilege Tax at the Rate of 1 mil for Calendar Year 2013."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
5E, amending file of council number 17, 1994, entitled "An Ordinance as Amended: Authorizing the Governing Body of the City of Scranton to Enact a Waste Disposal and Collection Fee for the Purpose of Raising Revenue to Cover the Waste Disposal and Collection Costs Incurred by the City of Scranton for the Disposal of Refuge by imposing a Waste Disposal and Collection Fee of $178 for Calendar Year 2013."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
5F, amending file of council number 145, 2007, entitled "An Ordinance: Renaming the Emergency and Municipal Services Tax to Local Service Tax and by imposing a withholding of $52 for the Calendar Year 2013."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5G, to prohibit truck traffic with certain exemptions off Lake Scranton Road from Route 307 northeasterly to Elmhurst Boulevard in the city of Scranton, directing postage of signage and prescribing penalties for violation thereof.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Yes, just one question. As I was looking at, there are exemptions. As I looked at the exemptions, would, would this prohibit, I guess, there's a lot of development that is taking place in that section of East Mountain and actually up into Roaring Brook Township and all, and the, the primary. and actually up into Roaring Brook Township and all, and the, the primary access for any of that construction-type traffic is across Lake Scranton Road. Now, I, as I've said before, I realize that it was excessive and all. I'm wondering if this legislation would prevent, um, reasonable construction traffic from, from utilizing that access?
Well, I think probably your best bet would be to speak to Attorney Kelly regarding that.
Mm-hmm. It was, it's just a concern, as I said, there aren't many ways to access that section of the mountain, and, uh, while I, while I do agree with the legislation, I, I would hate to see that further development be hindered or deterred because of it.
Is there anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, File of Council Number 64, 2012, approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license currently owned by Kalani's Incorporated, trading as Little Nicky's Pasta House, 77 Fallbrook Street, Carbondale, PA 18407, license number R-14028, to pass Rush LLC for use at Big House Tobacco Outlet located at 200 Green Ridge Street, Scranton, PA 18509, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
I would like to make a motion to table item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
Uh, yes, I, I think at last week's meeting, we, we talked about this, and, um, I, I'm prepared to vote no on this legislation for any number of reasons. And, um, I guess tabling it and putting it off for another week, um, it may do some good, but I don't know. But I, I guess I'm opposed to tabling it as well.
I would say that, for the most part, I concur with Mr. McGough. I will vote to table it only because it's another roadblock in the legislation being passed. Um, I strongly oppose this legislation, um, based on what I heard from residents in the neighborhood. And as I said last week, it would take, uh, it would take a lot to change my opinion and go against the neighbors down there. But, um, you know, tabling it is better than passing it, so I'll vote to table.
And, uh, I will vote to table because I do believe that, uh, the owner should be given the opportunity to, uh, make a presentation, as has been the case, uh, in other similar situations, and to respond to council's questions and concerns before it casts a final vote.
Mrs. Evans, I just would add that the owner did have an opportunity to come last week for the caucus, and he didn't show up.
Last week's caucus?
The public hearing.
The public hearing.
Public hearing.
But he was not invited to a public caucus?
No.
That's, that's fine.
Um, is there anyone else on the question? All those in favor of tabling item 7A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 46, 2012, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and apply for a grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Lace Building Affiliates LP to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a local share account grant pursuant to the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for a real estate development project located at 1315 Mylert Avenue, Scranton, PA to execute and enter into a local share account grant contract if approved with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $555,000 if awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the project to be known as Scranton Lace Redevelopment Project.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I strongly recommend passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, I just, a few brief comments. First of all, this is, this is legislation not for us to grant the Lace Works money. It is newly a legislation to allow them in the city to apply for a grant, and there is no guarantee that they receive the grant. But I think the, the consent of council would, and I'm hoping the unanimous consent of council would probably go a long way in their application process that we are strongly behind this project. And also, to answer some concerns, we have all, I think we have all been to the Lace Works numerous times, and we have been, at the last caucus that we had with the Lace Works affiliates, were provided with detailed plans for the project. Uh, I think we're all reasonably familiar with the project and what will occur, and from what I can see, it is something that's well worth, worth our support, uh, the entire project, and certainly, uh, this grant application is, uh, a step toward the completion of that project.
And one item that wasn't mentioned that, um, is something the police have been dealing with for a long period of time now, is people breaking into the Lace Works and trying to steal copper wire, copper piping, um, people possibly living in there, you know, squatters. So, when the project moves forward to eliminate that element of blight from the Lower Greenridge Neighborhood, which is something that you can't put a price on, and we're hopeful, as Mr. McGough and, and others have said, that, that they do receive the grant and the project is completed.
Is there anyone else? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. If there is, uh, no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.
Everyone go.